Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, December 19th, 2022. And I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we begin the celebration of the holiday and Christmas season in Batavia, we are ever thankful for the many blessings and gifts that our community over the years has received and has made this such a nice town for all of us to live in. We just ask that in the days of history to be written in the future that Batavia continues to grow and prosper and have the dialogue and the understanding of each other that has become Batavia's trademark in these days.
Recording in progress.
We ask also for a special blessing tonight for all those who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered on each of these men and women from throughout our nation who are providing a vital mission of our protection. Tonight, we ask for vision and understanding for the city council as they go about the items of business before us, knowing in the hearts and minds of each of them, they're here to do what will be in the very best interest of the community, Batavia, and its future. Amen. Okay. Amen. Would you lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I need a motion?
Kate Garrett is in the waiting room?
Yeah, we'll wait for just a second here.
Fine, I just wanted to make sure that...
She's not seeing the waiting room. She says she's on the weather. We're not seeing her.
Can she talk to us?
Kate, are you there?
Kate, are you here?
I promoted her to panelist. Hi, everybody. Sorry about that.
Okay, you're here with us. That's all I wanted to make sure that we had the city clerk in communication and in presence at the meeting. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Present and accounted for. Would you like a roll call?
All right. Okay, Ed, ask the city clerk to do the roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado? Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chanzet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Solfa?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
Thank you. Thirteen of fourteen present, Your Honor.
So we have thirteen of fourteen on Alderman present, either here or on Zoom. So we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. So we will move forward. And reminder to everyone, if you're going to speak tonight, please use one of the microphones in front of you so that you can be heard because this is all being taped and will be rebroadcast by BATV. Right, item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything? All right. Moving to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda, Alderman Chanzet as Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Consent agenda readers follows. To accept and place on file a building report, November 2022, a committee of the whole minutes for November 1st, November 14th, 2022, plan commission minutes for September 21st and October 5th, 2022, historic preservation commission November 14th, November 28th, 2022. Approvals of the December 7th, I'm sorry, December 9th, 2022 payroll in the amount of $966,552. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,599,059.69. City council minutes for November 21st, 2022.
Lehman?
Aye.
Resolution 22-120-R, authorization to purchase two 2023 Ford trucks from Murrow Brothers
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Ford, Inc., for $106,581.
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Resolution 22-121-R, authorization to purchase three truck chassis from Russian Truck Center
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
not to exceed $345,000.
Consent agenda is approved. All right, item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda.
Resolution 22-127-R, plat of abrogation for the building lines of Nagel Farms, subdivision
Does anybody this evening wants to address the city council?
Unit 7B.
Your Honor, we have a really loud hum in the broadcast right now.
Resolution 22-123-R, approval of change order number one for the water treatment plants,
I don't know if we can have people turn their own volumes up that are called in and turn
number one and number two modifications. Resolution 22-124-R, approving an agreement with Anixter Inc. for providing metering collections
the system down in here because it's, I think, the system inside here that's creating the hum.
We're having an issue with the system where you notice when Alderman Chanzet was speaking
system for amount not to exceed $291,065. That includes a 10% contingency amount. Ordinance 22-62, revising Title III, Chapter III of the Batavia Municipal Code, removing
that we could barely hear him.
Right, yeah.
So I had to go turn the volume way up.
square footage requirements for packaged liquor retailers, revising prohibited conduct
I'm not sure.
It's fine, we got it.
Okay. Okay.
and removing prohibition of telephone sales for liquor license owners.
All right, moving to item number eight, which is our Main Street Report.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Move by Alderman Chanzet, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agenda We're very honored tonight to have Beth Walker, the Executive Director of Batavia Main Street, as approved. here to give us a report.
Hi. So I want to start off by thanking the National Art Honor Society students who partnered with
Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
downtown businesses to decorate their windows for the holidays.
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
We reached out to them and asked if they would be willing to help our downtown businesses beautify the downtown for the holidays, and ten businesses took them up on that. We have a chance to check out the different windows. Beardsguard Barber, Six Cypress Boutique, J. Carlos Salon and Spa, Arlo Hendricks at the Boardwalk, Start Something Studios, El Taco Grande, Bulldogs Red Hot, Fernando Street Kitchen, Watersuit Studios, and Ziggy Nails. I just think it's, you know, the windows have been really beautiful this season. We do have a holiday decorating contest that ended today. We had over 1,300 votes, and Farm Dog Flowers actually won the best window display this year. Thank you so much for the Shop Small retail videos. All of those retail videos were released throughout the month of November, and I had handed out a spreadsheet with the different stats, and I'll send that to those who are not here today. Those are the stats that were collected by Main Street as of December 10th. So I think that we got some really good traction from these videos, and that doesn't include anything that the chamber, the city, or the different businesses that shared the individual businesses. So I was very happy with that. I did get a couple thank yous that I'd like to read from different businesses for the project. Sally, from the owner of Birds the Word, sent me a little note and said, "Thank you so much for the awesome Birds the Word video. It was so well made. Customers gave it rave reviews. It was a lot more than I expected." We had people come in after seeing it and said, "I've lived in Batavia, and I had no idea you were here. So thanks so much. We really appreciate that you did this for Batavia." Steve, the owner of Boji Bikes, said, "Thank you very much for letting Boji Bikes be a part of the Shop Small video project. It is by far the best production we've ever put out. It's like a real commercial for our little e-bike shop. We felt a sense of pride seeing a finished product, and certainly it has certainly inspired us to level up our marketing capabilities. Beth, the Main Street crew in the city always does so much for our downtown area, which certainly contributes to our success. Thank you again for the inclusion and for all you do." And then finally, Garrett from Farm Dog Flowers said, "Thank you to the city for funding such a wonderful project. We have been given an excellent marketing tool for our businesses that have already proven to show results in traffic by new shoppers and customers. This short of investment in the towns and businesses shows us we are supported from the city in which we reside in, which is so important. So thanks again. The merchants were really thrilled with these videos. We have more videos that will be released this month that weren't retail. And then in January, we have salons that will be released for like a New Year, New You kind of a promotion. And then, just being the last week, Be Sure to Shop Small will be releasing some infographics with all the downtown businesses' hours for the 23rd and 24th. So watch our social medias for that. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions of Beth this evening?
No, I just wanted to say thanks for putting this together. I really appreciate seeing that and seeing the kind of reach it was getting. It was very cool.
Yeah, and that doesn't include, you know, some of the businesses really took the extra effort, put it out on TikTok and different social media platforms, and the reach has been really great. So thank you guys so much for funding that project.
Yeah, I think they turned out great, and I think it's a great thing to do, and I think it also brings in the businesses to realize that there are, you know, support from different areas within the city, whether it be Main Street or the city, that they really appreciate that, you know, that that was done for them. And I think it also gives them the opportunity to realize what they can do.
Absolutely, and they appreciated actually getting the hard copy of, you know, because we send out the video to each of them and to use just in future marketing efforts. So none of the videos were dated or anything like that, so, you know, I'm hoping to have longevity with those.
So last Monday, we had a meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, which is all 284 mayors and village presidents in the seven county region, are invited to attend this meeting. And we had, I believe, almost 90 there. And I used to be the chairman of it, so I get to sit up in the front table so they all know who I am. But what I wanted to share was, because they all know who I am, I had two of them there at the meeting come to me after we were broke down for a break and tell me that they had, both of them, not together but on different occasions, had come to Batavia this past summer on Saturday to see what it was that Batavia was doing that was so, getting so much positive spin in their towns. And these aren't towns that are real close to us. And everybody said, we were blown away by, number one, that entourage of people set up on that River Street there. And then they said they were really blown away, I'll use that phrase because they both had different expressions to describe it, about the beautiful setting of the Fox River as it flowed through downtown Batavia and how that really kind of set the stage for a quality appearance to the town and therefore made it look like the people that were out there selling were selling quality goods, that this wasn't some slam bang boom farmer's market that didn't have anybody who knew what they were doing. You had quality merchants and quality stuff. And they both said they were going to take the ideas back to their, I think one had a chamber and one both had a chamber and a Main Street, and they were going to suggest that next spring they're be taking a trip back to Batavia on a Saturday to bring those folks out. So I invited them that when, if they do that, that they call me ahead of time. And I said I had arranged for them to be able to meet you and find, you know, let them ask some questions. And I said, "We can't give you a lot of time if you're there on Saturday morning, but we can certainly kind of give you a spin about what's all this is all about and how it came about." So I was very pleased to have that expression to me, that we had two cities I had never known were in here sneaking around looking to see what was going on, and they both left very impressed. So thank you for all you do to make that presentation such a selling point on a regional basis.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to item nine, and that's waive formal bidding?
Yep, I'll have that, Your Honor. This is in regard to the next resolution for the purchase of a street sweeper. The Public Works has asked us to waive the formal bidding on this because the vendor that they've been working with is willing to stick to their price that they offered back in September without adding on the additional 7% surcharges that the manufacturer is putting on as of November 30th. So we need a motion to waive the bidding process for the purchase of the street sweeper.
Are you making that motion?
Ah, yes. We waive bidding for the purchase of a street sweeper.
Second. Move by Alderman Malley, second by Alderman Connolly, for waiving formal bidding on the street sweeper. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is Resolution 22-122-R, awarding a Gateway Improvement Program grant fund to John Wazio for property at 950 West Wilson Street. Who's got this, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is a Gateway Improvement Grant on the amount of $20,000. This is a building that's being built on 950 West Wilson Street, and the total anticipated project budget for this is $1,006,006. So even though this is only a $20,000 grant, that's what we have available in the grant plan for that, for the Gateway Improvement side, and that will help with the construction of this project. So hopefully this gets going soon to, from an empty lot to a very nice looking building on West Wilson Street. Anybody have any questions? Comments? If not, I'll make the motion that we award the Gateway Improvement Program grant funds in the amount of $20,000 to John Wazio Jr., property owner at 950 West Wilson Street.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Solfa, for the approval of Resolution 22-122-R, awarding a Gateway Improvement Grant Fund to John Wazio for the property at 950 West Wilson Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved. Moving then to item 10, which is Resolution 22-119-R, authorization to purchase an A9 Moon Soon SE Street Sweeper from RNOW Incorporated for $323,552.
And I have that also. Yes, this is a, we're due for a new street sweeper. The last one or the current one is from 2007, so you can see it's significantly older. Staff did some research looking at different units. They looked at four different units and decided on, or felt the best one would be the Schor's A9 Monsoon, primarily because it has less parts that can wear out. In a nutshell, it's a regenerative air system that uses pressurized air rather than brushes that can wear out and cause more maintenance. And again, this is done through a vendor that's keeping their price from before, RNOW, for the price of $323,552. The budget was $350,000. Any discussion? Seeing none, I move that we approve Resolution 22-119-R, authorization to purchase A9 Moon Soon SE Street Sweeper from the RNOW Incorporated for $323,552.
Second. Move by Alderman Malley, second by Alderman Solfa, for the approval of the purchase of the street sweeper. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is Resolution 22-122-R, awarding a Gateway Improvement Program grant fund to John Wazio for property at 950 West Wilson Street. Who's got this, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is a Gateway Improvement Grant on the amount of $20,000. This is a building that's being built on 950 West Wilson Street, and the total anticipated project budget for this is $1,006,006. So even though this is only a $20,000 grant, that's what we have available in the grant plan for that, for the Gateway Improvement side, and that will help with the construction of this project. So hopefully this gets going soon to, from an empty lot to a very nice looking building on West Wilson Street. Anybody have any questions? Comments? If not, I'll make the motion that we award the Gateway Improvement Program grant funds in the amount of $20,000 to John Wazio Jr., property owner at 950 West Wilson Street.
Second. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Solfa, for the approval of Resolution 22-122-R, awarding a Gateway Improvement Grant Fund to John Wazio for the property at 950 West Wilson Street. Any further discussion? I would just offer up, you know, it's been hanging out here in the hallway, and I have to walk through here now to get upstairs because of the way the building is currently configured with no stairway in here. And I think three times in the last month and a half that that has been hanging up there, I've had people say, "Boy, this is a nice looking building. We're adding to Batavia. This is going to look very, very, very well up there on West Wilson Street and hopefully enhances the standards for anybody else that wants to come in there and build something." So I just want to thank Mr. Wazio for his ingenuity and his determination to put up a real nice looking building.
If you want to use the mic here so we can get you on the air.
I didn't even realize that was you sitting there.
I just wanted to thank the city council for this grant. It's greatly appreciated with the cost of everything going up. This is a nice little boost here right before Christmas, and thank you again, and Merry Christmas, everyone.
Okay. All right, then going to item 12?
No, we need to vote.
Okay, Kirk, call the roll on the vote.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Vogel.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, motion's approved, so.
It was 12 no, no, and then one abstain.
Did Miller vote absent?
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Recount, 12 yes, no, no, one abstain, one absent.
Right, one absent. So it's 12 yes, no, no's. Okay. So that's done. Moving then to 12, which is Ordinance 22-63, annexing 34W 885 Sunset Drive, 0 South 346 Hart Road, 0 South 393, and 02363, I'll make sure I'm on the right, 0 South, 02 South 347, 02 South 362, and 0 South 376, and 0 South 392 Meadows Drive. Who's got it? Alderman Wolf, you have this?
I do have it, Your Honor. This is one of the bigger pieces we have on the east side. That's one of the unincorporated islands that we're annexing into the city, and we discussed this at the town meeting, and really no, there's no additions or anything, and this is just a simple annexation in that area. And then there's a couple things about the jurisdiction over the remaining sections of Meadow Drive on the south of Sunset, and we also have jurisdiction to the rest of Hart Road and Sunset because of the prior annexation. So it's really only the properties that we're dealing with in this one. And it's eight different parcels on this one. I thought there are no questions. I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance 22-63, annexing 34W 885 Sunset Drive, 2 South 346 Hart Road, 2 South 393, 2 South 363, 2 South 347, 2 South 362, 2 South 376, and 2 South 392 Meadow Drive.
Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Malley, for the approval of the annexations on Sunset Drive, Hart Road, and Meadows Drive. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved for the annexations. Okay, moving to 13, which is Resolution 22-128-R, authorizing purchase of two police interceptor vehicles. Alderman Malley?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The plan to replace police vehicles is being proposed with hybrids. I'm very excited to see that, and thank you, Chief Mazza, for sending that information, comparison on gasoline, old gasoline to hybrid. I think it's going to be a significant savings, and I look forward to, and I share your hope that we can get them sooner and not have to wait.
Absolutely.
So thank you for doing that. I appreciate it and appreciate the information. So this is for the purchase of two hybrids. Within budget, there are uplift charges that are in addition to this, but the cost is less than what was budgeted. So any questions, discussion? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-128-R, authorizing the purchase of two police department patrol vehicles for $87,230.
Second. Move by Alderman Malley, second by Alderman Connolly, for the approval of the Resolution 22-128-R, authorizing the purchase of two police interceptor vehicles. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malley?
Aye.
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved, 13 yes, no, nos, one absent. All right, moving to 14, which is Resolution 22-117-R, authorizing paratransit subsidy agreement between City of Batavia and Pace Transit for the Ride in Kane program. Who's got this one?
Your Honor, I do.
Go ahead.
So, as we discussed in committee, this is a renewal of an annual contract. It's just always a great opportunity to promote this great service for people who are not aware of it. Every day, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, this service is available to people who do need it. It is a substantially discounted ride service. The current fare, it's $5 for the first 10 miles of a trip, and $1.50 for each additional mile over 10 miles. And it's meant for people 65 and older, disabled individuals, and those who have low income and qualify for the service in Kane County. It's a great service, and I want to make sure we had a chance to promote it. This is the renewal of the agreement for the subsidy. I would move for approval for Resolution 22-117-R. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and Pace related to this dial-a-ride bus service.
Second. Moved by Chanzet, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of Resolution 22-117-R. Any discussion? Well, as the Kane County Pace Board member, I just want to highly recommend this. The subsidy that we get is a, really the thing that drives it and really helps us put this together, is you all know, we now have six senior living communities in the community of Batavia, and there's, the number changes every day some years. Probably around 2,000 people just in those facilities that are using this. And many of these rides now, we're finding, it's three, four, five people, because they all want to go to Walmart, or they all want to go to the Jewel, or whatever it is they want to do. And of all the services we are providing, this is one that really does get quite a bit of action in there, because we're part of the Pace system. If, when they get overloaded, they'll start sending us additional buses on any given day when we got a real crush for people to get on, because they try to keep everybody on time as to when they're going to pick them up, and when they're going to take them back, and the whole bit. So this is, really is a great program. I'm very proud of it, that we're able to get so many people that otherwise probably would not have a ride to the doctor, to the hairdresser, to Randall Road, to downtown Batavia, wherever it is they want to go. And every now and then, we get one where somebody says they want to get on the bus and have us take them to Rockford or something. Well, then they have to kind of say, whoops, can't go that far. There's a subsidy agreement in place here that says we keep it within, you know, the Batavia and few miles surrounding it, but we're not hauling you down to Ottawa or Rockford, but that's happened before. So then we refer them to our other car services that you can call, and they can take them to Rockford or wherever. But that's how that works. So Kirk, call the roll on the motion?
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to 15, the Administrator's Report. Laura?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Alderman Tom Connolly for volunteering to be on the Batavia Chamber Board, replacing Mike Rosado, who recently came off of the board. So thank you very much, Tom, for volunteering for that. I had the kickoff meeting with Rural 29, who is the firm that we hired to create a tagline and theme for our single-use bag educational campaign, to encourage people to use reusable bags when they head out for shopping. Excited to be working with them, and they expect to be delivering our messaging for us to use in the campaign somewhere mid-January. So we're still on track for early 23, 2023 start to that campaign. We have received a first draft of our bike and pedestrian plan from Active Transportation, just received it at the end of last week, so we're still kind of going through it and hope to get any changes back to them this week, so that we can circulate that draft plan to the stakeholder group that we've been meeting with throughout the process, and then to bring that draft back to City Council for your review and approval. Lori Botterman has been working with the Water and Sewer Utilities to create a communication piece for residents, to let them know about the rate changes that will become effective January 1st, and provide an explanation for that and how those funds are used. In Public Works, well number nine, rehab work has commenced, and the contractor's currently in the process of pulling the pump and motor for inspection and rehabilitation. The project is expected to last throughout the winter months, and the well should be back in service sometime next spring before the heavy season of lawn watering begins. This part of the larger ongoing water treatment plant updates project that we have been going through in the last couple of years. The Streets Crew took advantage of the early ending to the leaf collection season and lack of snow in early December to catch up on various projects that often we have to delay, so things like hedge basin cleaning, cleaning of signage, and then temporary patching. Member of our Electric Department, Steve Allen, attended a cybersecurity summit for Municipal Electric Utilities. And IT has been busy, but in the midst of it all, they took the opportunity to send out a message to all employees, and you may have also received it, to think before you click during the holiday season. It has been shown that whether it's just because people are so busy, or they're looking for deals online, or what have you, phishing scams get particularly creative this season. So not only for employees, but it's something to share with residents as well, to be very cautious of what you're clicking on. And we appreciate our IT Department being so proactive in this regard. Howard has been working with Finance to create the system by which the retailers who are subject to the single-use bag fee will be able to report on their number of bags and to pay their fees through that system. And then finally, I just wanted to share with you some information that we have received from Waste Management. They're trying to be proactive with regard to the news of the upcoming storms. And so on Thursday, they're going to begin their residential service at 6:00 AM instead of 7:00 AM for the safety of the community and also for their drivers. And Friday service will be determined based on what has happened on Thursday. It may be that we end up pushing that collection to Saturday instead of doing it on Friday. So be sure to check the city's website, our Facebook page, and we'll be providing you with updates and put this information out to everybody, so we can try to get our yard waste, or our garbage safely hauled in the midst of what sounds like it's going to be a pretty challenging storm. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Laura?
Thank you.
Okay, we have other business? All right, moving to the Mayor's Report. The City Clerk's office was kind enough before the, at the end of the day, to supply me with the seven nominating petitions that have been filed for the seven open seats on the Batavia City Council. So we do have one candidate in each board that will be unopposed on the ballot in the coming election. So I don't need to read them all out. There is, there is one new person in the Rosado seat, because Alderman Rosado's not running again. And he's, the person who submitted the petition was Tim Lancy of 858 Stewart Street, which is the subdivision right there behind the East Side Fire Station. And that's the sixth board. So that's who we got for the candidates. So the voter turnout on that may not be real big, because there's certainly no city contests going on. I don't know if our friends at the school board are going to put any, I think they may have some school board candidates, but they were also thinking about doing a referendum. I don't know if they are or not. I think they have to make their mind up today, maybe. I don't know. Anyway.
Needs to be done by resolution by January 17.
Is that what it is? Okay. So, anyway, I thought you'd all find that of some interest. I just would like to kind of conclude the meeting by, you know, wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. But what I want to say as the mayor is, is that having lived in this town all my life, and having had my ears burned and yelled at by a number of people over the years about Christmas decorations, I want to tell you, I think this year, Batavia probably is at its all-time historical high as far as the number of Christmas decorations. And I have people constantly asking me, where's the best ones to go look at? And I've stepped back on that one, because there are so many good ones that I don't want somebody to say, well, gee, the mayor didn't mention mine. But I even had Channel 7 out here the other day, because there, we had one address in town that was involved in a TV contest, because it was so good. It was down on Redant Road at Ekman. And they, they didn't win the contest, but Channel 7 was out here. And what was interesting is they, they showed up over at the police station, and I just happened to be here, and they were kind of set back because they came in on a GPS, and the GPS told them to come in Kirk Road to Wilson Street, come down Wilson, and then take a, I guess it would be a right-hand turn onto Redant Road there. Well, Redant Road goes down to Pine Street, and then it stops. And then you got to know that you got to go down about a block and a half to find the south leg of Randall Road. And that was, that was causing them a little bit of a distraction as to how to figure that out. So I finally was able to help them. I let them follow me down there, so they could figure out how to get around that kind of large jog we have in Redant Road. So I thought that was interesting. But really, we, I encourage everyone in town to go out and take a ride around the next week, and just look at nighttime, all the fabulous decorations we've got. We've got some fabulous displays out there, and I think it speaks to the heart and soul. And a lot of this stuff, people are telling me, a lot of people have spent a lot of money on the Christmas decorations in their yards and whatever. So this is something that is, I think as a community, we should be very, very proud of, that we got such a fabulous display. And if you ride around town, and I have done it, there is no neighborhood that is untouched by Christmas decorations. Everybody's got a little, and then all of a sudden, there's maybe a dull space for a couple of blocks, and then all of a sudden, there's a new group of folks that have three or four in a row that are just fabulous. So it's, speaks to what we're all about, and I think Batavia should be very proud of itself with the Christmas decorations that we have as a part of the community. So with that, I will wish everybody a Merry Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and let us go forth for the next few days and enjoy our families and our community, and have a good time, because hopefully the snowstorm won't challenge us too much, but we may put Public Works to work here for a couple of days and keep them busy. And of course, our police and fire, all those guys will be out too, but they all do their jobs as they should. And, you know, we don't really have anything to worry about in any of those departments either. So just say a prayer for the ones in, for the police, the fire, and the public works who are maybe out in some difficult weather conditions as it unfolds itself in the next few days. So Alderman Wolf, I entertain a motion?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Last one of the year.
Moved by Wolf, second by Malay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.